Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Spring Independent School District. It is officially called to order on Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is now seven o'clock P. M. Board of Trustees President are Trustee Adams, Trustee Correa, Trustee Durant, Trustee Jensen, Trustee Newhouse, and Trustee McDaniel. I'd like to ask if everyone could please turn off or silence your cell phones or any electronic devices. At this time, our Board Vice President and our Board Equity Committee Lead, Winford Adams, Jr., will begin the meeting by reading the Spring ISD Equity Statement.
Thank you, Madam President. "Spring Independent School District strongly believes in educational and racial equity as fundamental aspects of its core mission and purpose, embodied through any program, practice, decision, or action that affects all students with a strategic focus on those choices and policies that most strongly impact marginalized students. We believe all students, regardless of their ability, ethnicity, language, race, religion, gender identity, and status, should have equitable access to opportunities, resources, support systems, and educational rigor in order to maximize their academic success and social emotional well-being. We believe every Spring Independent School District student is valuable and possesses individual strengths and characteristics that make our district a great place to learn and grow. Moreover, we seek to act on that belief, instituting policies and practice that value diversity, committing ourselves as a district to continued growth and development, and working to support the success of every student in all that we do."
Thank you, Trustee Adams. Tonight's presentation of colors will be led by the Carl Winchey Senior High School Honor Guard. The pledges will be led by Commander Melinda Ray. The Honor Guard member carrying the U. S. Flag, Honor Guard Committee, Melinda Ray. Carrying the Texas flag is Melissa Sanchez. Left rifle is Commander Alyssa Nation. Right rifle is Sylvia Cinteras. The Carl Winchey Senior High School Honor Guard is led by Instructor Lakeisha Collins, Edward Price, and Harris Waterman. At this time, would everyone please rise?
Right face. Forward march. Left, 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 right, left, 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 right, left, 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 right, left. Honor Guard, up. Left face. Present arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, eternal. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible." Honor Guard, forward march. Left, 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 right, left, 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 right, left, Honor Guard, it's my, it's missed.
I'd like everyone, if you could please remain standing for a moment of silence quietly observed in your own way. Thank you. You may be seated. Our next item on tonight's agenda is our super proud Superintendent remarks. So we will now hear from Dr. Lapita Inahosa.
Thank you, Mr. Ant, and good evening. Buenas tardes a todos los que están aquí. Gracias por venir a nuestra junta de la Mesa Directiva. Thank you all for being here. It's truly an honor to have you here at our board meeting. And so lots of great things that are happening in Spring ISD every single day. And today, just today, we were out. Dr. Jensen joined us with the Spring ISD Education Foundation, and we had the Grant Express out and about. Our Spring ISD Education Foundation delivered grants to teachers at a dozen of our schools today. We started out early in the morning at Westfield High School. I see Ms. Hunter Way in the back. We were out there first thing in the morning. And ended the day at Bama Elementary School. This is an occasion that we all look forward to, that I look forward to each year, and it's such a great experience to see our teachers being rewarded for their hard work and, most importantly, their innovation. To date, the Spring ISD Education Foundation has delivered half a million dollars to our teachers on this Grant Express. So I think that's a big, big applause to our Education Foundation and all of you that support it. Big thank you to the foundation. It is also this month, the month of November, is recognized as Parent Involvement Month, and this is a very important month for us in Spring ISD. We will be celebrating National Parent Involvement Night on Thursday evening at our Family and Community Engagement Center. So please, if you can, join us. I am also very proud that we are at about ten thousand hours in terms of volunteer hours in our schools and in our district. And of course, that means a lot of parents are involved. Our volunteer numbers continue to increase, and I am told that we are on track to meet our pre-pandemic, pre-COVID hours. So our goal this year is sixty thousand hours of volunteer time. So parents, community members, mentors that are out there, or if you want to join us, please visit your nearest Spring ISD school and come in and help volunteer. I believe also this is something that's so important to show our students that we support them. Later in tonight's or today's meeting, we will be honoring a spotlight recognition to our Family and Community Engagement Department that supports our family involvement. Now, I know I see some familiar faces out there. I want to definitely congratulate all three of our high schools, Decanee, Spring, and Westfield. All three of them made it to the first round of the playoffs. To our coaches, yes, thank you. To our coaches and student athletes, we are so very proud of all your hard work and tenacity in making this achievement. This weekend, Westfield, which was undefeated in district play this year, defeated Conroe to advance even further. So the Mustangs now will face Klein Kane in the area round this Friday at Tomball ISD Stadium. So be sure that you go out and you cheer on our Westfield Mustangs as they continue to dominate in the postseason. So whoever wins this matchup will advance to the regional round. So we are definitely excited, a little anxious, and eager to see our Mustangs do well. And I also have to do a big shout out to, right here in the corner of Ella and Nineteen Sixty, our CBS partnerships. If you drive by there, you'll see that they are cheering on our Mustangs, and so we appreciate the community support because it really takes all of us to support our student athletes. Also, I think we talked about this last time that we were together, but I do want to remind everyone, it is school choice time. This is a reminder that the applications are now open for our district schools of choice. They'll remain open through January, but please do not wait. Do it now. We actually have support for you. The applications are online, and so I encourage all parents and their children to apply online for one of our specialty schools by going to our website, and you'll see the application there. Very easy to fill out, but if you need help, please visit any one of our campuses. We also have our instructional calendar. So students, parents, teachers, community members, everyone has the opportunity to vote for their calendar of choice for our next school year, for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And again, you know, special thanks to our ACE Committee and the Subcommittee for working to develop two really good calendars. And it is really up to you all to vote on the one that you would like to see as our calendar for next school year. Again, just go to our website, www.springisd.org, and then forward slash calendar survey, and you'll see the options there. And we will be bringing that final decision to the board here in December. So we want you to get your voices out there and take a vote. And then last but not least, holiday season is upon us, and Thanksgiving will be next week. We just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, a safe, peaceful week next week with your family and friends. Our children will have the opportunity to be home and just to let the entire community know, we are so grateful, so very grateful for your continued support of your child's schools and of our district, and most importantly, public education. We appreciate your support in all ways that you show it at your campus or here at the district level. Muchísimas gracias a todos ustedes que siguen apoyando a nuestras escuelas públicas, especialmente a la escuela de sus hijos, a nuestro distrito aquí en Spring ISD. Nosotros apreciamos el apoyo y es un apoyo que necesitamos. Muchísimas gracias. Thank you, Mr. Ant. That concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Inahosa. And now, this is one of my favorite times of the board meeting because I now have an opportunity to ask my colleagues if they have any remarks they'd like to make.
Madam President, I'd like to mention that last month I was unable to be here at the board meeting due to a very serious operation that my husband had. As a result, I had to cancel a field trip for the veterinary class at Winchey High School. We had scheduled for them to come out and do shots with our animals and other veterinary activities on the ranch. And it just goes to show how word travels. When I had to cancel that, the veterinary, I guess communication works well there at Winchey, the horticulture class, Ms. Malachek did a beautiful job, the horticulture kids, in presenting me with two beautiful arrangements. The kids and the floral department there at the horticulture did an awesome job. So I have to give a happy shout out to Winchey High School's horticulture class and Ms. Malachek for that presentation. And she gave it in the name of the board and the leadership team. But it was beautiful. My husband was amazed, brought tears to his eyes. He said, "They're thinking of you at spring." I said, "They're thinking of you too." But I know he told Ms. Courtney at the Veterinary Science that we're going to reschedule that field trip for the spring. So it's still going to happen.
Thank you. Great news.
Good evening, everyone. I had the opportunity to visit and with the first Superintendent Student Advisory Committee meeting yesterday, and I just left refreshed and just want to say that we're in good hands. You know, we hear at the media, there's a lot of different negativity, but when you actually listen to our kids and give them the space to collaborate and share their thoughts and step into leadership, we are in good hands. They were discussing their mission for the committee, and they also dove into our district equity statement and talked about how the work they're doing in their committee actually validates our equity statement through inclusion of student voice. They shared their passion for community service. They're very excited about that. They came up with campaign speeches in like five minutes that were very true to who they are. You could tell that they're strong in their values and just excited to lead and make change for themselves and their peers and for those coming behind them. So I was just very excited to be able to attend that. The purpose was because, as we discussed, we are working on a student governance fellowship to work alongside the board. So they would sort of be complementary programs. So I just wanted to gain some insight into what we're already doing, and we're doing phenomenal work. Shout out to Ms. Walker, to all of the sponsors, to Ms. Chappa, Ms. Washington at CTE over at Decanee. We have Mr. B. over at Winchey, Mr. Wood at Westfield, Ms. Gallegos at Momentum, Ms. Williams Spring, the Funshine Committee over at Spring High School, Ms. Dudley. I think I got everybody, but just wanted to say thank you all for supporting our students and to the bus drivers as well because it's a lot to coordinate all of those high schools and get all the kids there and get back safely. So just, we're in good hands, everybody. The kids are really stepping into their leadership and doing great work. So excited to see what they come out with, the change they make from that committee. Also, just wanted to share, as a part of Leadership Task B, Class of Two Thousand and Twenty-Four, I had the chance to visit El Paso last week. And everybody that I'm telling about it, I just say it feels like a big hug that I was wrapped in when I got to that region. Just the sense of community is overflowing, the pride in their history, and they're doing some amazing things out there. So just wanted to publicly say thank you to El Paso ISD and to kind of TO ISD for opening your district to us. A lot happened in a short amount of time, but I'm definitely going to give my debrief notes to the Team of Eight as well with the insights that I gained from there. And also for the student advisory, shout out to Mr. Schubert and Dr. Inahosa as well because they were a major part of making sure everything ran smoothly yesterday with the kids. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Trustee McDaniel's, and we're really excited about the pilot you're going to lead for us for the Student Governance Committee that will partner with the board. So we're really excited about getting more engaged one-on-one with the students, letting them see what leadership looks like from this level and allowing their voices to be a part of the decisions and the things that we make, you know, on their behalf. So we're excited about it. So thank you for that work. I wanted to just remark on Parent Involvement Month. We, I think, have a very strong, if you drive by that FACE building almost any night of the week, it's full. There's something going on there almost every evening. I've been wanting to get over there and take a Spanish class, so I'm hoping I'll be able to fit that in now that I'm retiring. But I attended the Veterans Day breakfast that was hosted by Communication and the Community Engagement Department, and it was wonderful. We had a good turnout, excellent guest speaker, a really good breakfast, and I thought it was just really well done. And I've had several people comment to me on what a great event it was and how much they loved the speaker and everything that we offered that day. It was really a great job. Also, on this Thursday, November sixteenth, we will be having our additional Building Bridges with the Board, which is in collaboration with our Community Engagement Committee along with FACE. And then also, we had our NAMM Toy Drive in collaboration. So those are several events that we did this month for Parent Involvement. In addition to that, we had our Hispanic Heritage Month. A lot of great celebration. I don't know if you've seen on Twitter. All of our campuses have gone above and beyond to celebrate this month. And I and a couple of my other board members had an opportunity to go see Chicago, which was a play that was put on over at Westfield High School, and our students did an amazing job. Just their acting, their voices and song was outstanding. I mean, you felt like you were at a professional performance. And I was there with Trustee McDaniel, Trustee Jensen, Trustee Adams, and myself. And so it was really a great time for us all to be there together, as well as I had an opportunity to bring closing remarks at the National Technical Honor Society. We inducted two hundred and fifty-two, I think, students into the National Technical Honor Society through our CTE Cynthia Williams Department. And it was just amazing. Those students have worked hard every single day to achieve that level. And we were really excited to have so many, you know, two hundred and fifty inducted this year. And so we've been really busy this month. There's been some great things happening, and it's a great day and a great time to be in Spring ISD. Mr. Adams, did you have?
So the Messiah greet, and how are the children? The response should be, the children are well. And the children are well in spring. Justine mentioned the performance at Westfield of Chicago. I got to attend that performance and a performance at Spring High School where Mrs. Ocker's kids put on Seussical the Musical. Also, a bunch of talented kids. We just had some young men here singing. They'll be on that stage in a couple of years. I'll cite the opportunity to honor our transportation people. Trustee McDaniel mentioned the bus drivers. It's more than just the bus drivers, though, that are working double shifts and really putting in hard work to get our kids to school. It's the mechanics, it's the schedulers, it's all the people at transportation to make sure our kids get to school safely. As I said, they are well. On a bit of a more sour note, though, just recently, in the last few days, HB One and SB One, HB One cleared committee, which is something it had never done. And these are the voucher bills that we're facing, where they're going to take your tax dollars and use them to pay some folks' private school tuition. And I have a massive problem with that. HB One has cleared committee, but it still has to be approved on the floor of the House. So if you have an opportunity to call your state rep and reach out to the legislators and let them know how you feel, you may not feel the way I do. I think it's good for them to hear any feedback from the community about that. As the process works, a version of a voucher bill has, had already passed, SB One had already passed in the previous special session. It was immediately passed right after the new special session, the fourth one passed. And so HB One, the bill in the House had been what was holding it back. So it has cleared committee in the House. We'll get a House vote, and then they have to combine those. So this fight is still ongoing. I encourage people in the community to get involved and engaged in this fight. There's a slippery slope coming, and we have to get off of it. Thank you.
Just hearing all of you speak about all the events that we've been going to, it's really the season to celebrate so many accomplishments in Spring ISD. I just wanted to highlight one more because we have those wonderful displays out in the hall. If you haven't seen them already, please go and look. We had a Hispanic Heritage Night at Winchey High School, but it involved all the schools, elementary through high school. And you've never seen a more adorable collection of kids come up and get their awards for writing and speaking and all their accomplishments. And then you would have the older kids, and you see, oh, my gosh, they're becoming wonderful adults. And I've got to say one thing. I go to entertainment around spring, and there's so many talented kids. And I also see the academic accomplishments of our students. But that Hispanic Heritage Night combined them. And I don't know when I've had more fun with the music and spontaneous singing and that sort of thing, and they actually got me out on the floor and dancing. And all of you know, that was a real accomplishment.
And Dr. Jensen, you were spinning. I saw you spinning. She was spinning.
Well, thank you, everyone. We are going to now continue with tonight's agenda. Our next item are recognitions. So at this time, I'd like to ask the board and Dr. Inahosa to join us down in the horseshoe.
Great. All right. Good evening, Madam President, Trustees, Dr. Inahosa, Administration, and Audience. Our first recognition item this evening is a spotlight honoring some of our top district winners who participated in this year's Spring ISD Hispanic Heritage Month Program. Earlier this month, the district hosted a vibrant celebration of Hispanic heritage at Carl Winchey Senior High School in honor of its annual Hispanic Heritage Program and competition. This dynamic event was a mix of artistic expression, captivating performances, culinary delights, and heartfelt narratives that showcased Spring ISD's commitment to honoring and celebrating its diverse heritage. Started in nineteen sixty-eight by Congress as Hispanic Heritage Week, this annual nationwide celebration was expanded to a full month in nineteen eighty-eight. The commencement of this observance begins in the middle of September and aligns with the Independence Aniversaries of several Latin American nations, including Mexico, Guatemala, Honduras, El Salvador, Nicaragua, and Costa Rica. In reflecting our district's commitment to equity and embracing the cultural tapestry that enriches our community, Spring ISD wholeheartedly encourages and celebrates its students and educators exploration of expression of Latin culture and heritage. This year's program was anchored by the compelling theme of posterity, power, and progress, reflecting both the enduring legacy and the forward momentum of Latino and Hispanic culture. We extend our heartfelt appreciation to all participants for their unwavering commitment to nurturing a more profound knowledge and appreciation of the diverse identities represented within our amazing Spring ISD community. In addition, a big thank you to Social Studies Curriculum Specialist Samba Goddard, who, you got some fans out there, all of those and all of those who helped organize and run the event. Tonight, we have with us several of this year's first-place winners who would like to now call up to join us in the horseshoe to greet the board members and take a photo. Students, please join us up front when I call your name. Estudiantes, unansanse a nosotros al frente cuando diga su nombre. In the category of arts individual winners, from Marshall Elementary, grades K through two, Lydia McConico. From Smith Elementary, grades three through five, Maria Banuero. From Wells Middle School, Joylin Salinas. From Winchey High School, Kimberly Saravia. Now moving on to the arts group winners. From Northgate Crossing Elementary, grades K through two, Gianluco Abundis, Maya Phillips, Alana Barbosa, Allison Alvarez, and Jennifer Moreno. From Link Elementary, grades three through five, Monica Rodella and Sofia Montoya. From Wells Middle School, Brenda Ranhel Cristo de la Cerrada. From Decane High School, Kenzie Solar, Guillermo Juarez, Francisco Rodriguez, and Yasmin Ramirez. Okay, now moving on to the writing category, individual winners. From Anderson Elementary, Audrey Rocha. From Twin Creeks Middle School, Neve Hayes. From Spring High School, Lena Mora. And our last group winners in the writing category, from Spring High School, Ashley Bonilla, Maria Diaz, and Christopher Flores. One more round of applause for all of our students. Miss, Miss DePauw is kinda back there. Alright, guys. Here we go. Nice smiles, everybody. Hang on just one minute. Alright, just a couple of more. And here we go on three. One, two, and three. Here, I'll get out of your way. Our next recognition item this evening is a spotlight in honor of National Parental Involvement Month. With November sixteenth as this year's National Parental Involvement Day and the month of November as National Parental Involvement Month, our family and community engagement department and many campuses around the district are finding special ways to send district parents and guardians a message of thanks for all that they do on behalf of Spring ISD schools and students. The annual observance raises awareness about the importance of family involvement in education and highlights the positive impact it can have on students' achievement. The difference that engaged and involved parents and guardians can make in their children's education cannot be overstated. Dr. Karen Matt, the world-renowned leader and expert on the impact of family engagement, states that we need to see families and community members as co-creators and co-producers of the excellent schools that we want for all of our children. Whether it's helping with homework, attending parent-teacher conferences, or volunteering on campus for school events, every parent or guardian has a unique and valuable role to play in their children's education. By participating in this special observance, schools can celebrate the contributions of parents and volunteers, promote the importance of family and community involvement in education, encourage collaboration and partnerships, and promote the value of public education as a force to strengthen and build up communities. I would like to take a moment to thank a special member of my own team, who, along with her department, plays a vital role in connecting our schools to our community and our community to our schools. Executive Director of Family and Community Engagement, please welcome to the front of the horseshoe, Ms. Tranita Carroll. Tranita, you wanna bring your team to here?
Good evening, President Durant, Dr. Inahosa, members of the board. Thank you so much for recognizing, one, November being National Parent Involvement Month, and this Thursday, November sixteenth, being National Parent Involvement Day. It is, I, I do not consider this a job or a career. Leading the work that we do for family and community engagement truly is my ministry. I enjoy coming to work every single day, knowing that the work that we do is making a difference in our community, to my neighbors. Westfield is my feeder pattern. So I, I just, I truly, truly, truly love and enjoy everything that we do in the FACE department. I do want to recognize our family empowerment specialist, Zuma Zitumul. She is new. You are a month old with us. She has come in, she is working, um, particularly in early childhood. She has a, a many, many years in, in early childhood as part of her background. And of course, we have Dr. Lorena Zertucci, who serves as our community engagement coordinator. Not with us today, we have Nicole Bowman, who handles all of our compliance for Title I Part A. And then Isabel Luna, who is our, she's the other family empowerment coordinator. And we also have five home instructors who take care of all of our, our itty-bitties and get them ready for a successful pre-K and kindergarten career. And I, I absolutely could not do what I do without my team holding me up and really getting all the work done. And so I'm just very, very thankful and very appreciative for this opportunity to serve in this capacity. Thank you.
Alright, guys, right here. Very nice smiles. On three, one, two, and three. Alright, here we go. On three, one, two, and three. Congratulations, guys. Okay, so, uh, next this evening, we have a point of pride recognition in honor of Westfield High School Principal, Ms. Laura Hunter, who was elected to serve as a twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Region Four representative on the Board of Directors of the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals, also known as TASPI. Founded in nineteen twenty-three and celebrating its centennial uh, this year, the Texas Association, Association of Secondary School Principals is made up of more than fifty-six hundred campus-level administrators across Texas. The group's work involves both educational and charitable activities with a primary aim of promoting the advancement of secondary school education and providing a clearinghouse for discussions bearing on the problems of secondary school operations. TASPI also serves as the sponsoring organization, organization for the Texas Association of Student Councils and the Texas Association of Future Educators, and works to promote student council participation and to encourage students across the state to become teachers. Principal Hunter has been a respected member of the TASPI, of TASPI for more than, for many years, I'm sorry, for many years. And Spring ISD is excited to celebrate her role as Region Four representative on the Board of Directors. The motto of the Texas Association of School, Secondary School Principals is, above all, students first. And Ms. Hunter has demonstrated her commitment to that motto, both through her work and as one of our outstanding secondary school principals here in Spring ISD, and through her example of involved and engaged educational leadership at both the regional and state level. Ladies and gentlemen, let's welcome to the horseshoe, Ms. Principal Hunter. And last this evening, we're celebrating Spring ISD's continued achievements in special education compliance, as well as some of the special education team members who have worked tirelessly to accomplish growth and progress over the past three school years on behalf of our students with disabilities. At this time, I would like to invite our Executive Director of Special Education, Dr. Talisa Edwards, to the podium to tell us more.
Good evening, Board President Durant, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Inahosa, and senior leadership team and guests. Um, thank you so much for this opportunity. We're really excited about the opportunity to celebrate and acknowledge our accomplishments in our special education department in areas of compliance. Um, so, one of the things that's really exciting to note is that despite um, the significant shortages of our staff um, and the challenges that come up with that, with not having enough of our teachers and our special education um, diagnosticians and um, school psychologists and our um, speech pathologists, we have been able to still make gains and increase in our compliance despite those challenges that are really a national challenge. Um, and so one of the things that's really cool is that October thirty-first, uh, we received a notification from the TEA that we were able to demonstrate one hundred percent compliance in, in three areas of um, special education areas of focus. And so, we're really excited about that. And then the last area, which was a new area that they've identified for us to be compliant, we increased um, from the eighty-nine percent that we had last time to ninety-three point one. We got that one, an additional one points uh, percent. Um, so want to just honor and celebrate all of our team members. This is not a one-person job. This is in a, a collective effort. And so we have a lot of our folks that were able to come and join us, some joining us over uh, on the video. Uh, but a lot of them are here, present. We have our directors, we have coordinators, we have specialists, we have art facilitators, speech pathologists, um, diagnosticians, and school psychologists, and some teachers of the blind. So I'd love to see if we could have them all stand up, and can they come in and join in the horseshoe? So thank you so much. Also, just as we're share, as people are coming up, um, I wanna also just thank you all as a board for supporting the efforts of every student. Um, we do truly see that in all of our students with disabilities, varying abilities, that you all do support that work, so.
Okay, if yours tall as me, you're shorter. Can I get to the stand in the front? Tall as me, you're shorter. Team of shorties. All right. I think we're, I think we're good. Yeah, there you go, there you go, yeah. Yeah, you two on the end. There you go, there you go, there you go. Now we're good, now we're good. Dr. Justin, yeah, got her, all right. All right, guys, right here. Nice smiles, everybody, and on three, one, two, and three. Hang on just a minute. All right, here we go, one more. On three, one, two, and three. All right, guys, thank you, congratulations.
I'd like to make a comment before you all leave. I did, because I've sat on this board for 17 years, and we've had challenges in special ed. And we know how hard you guys have worked. And I don't think people realize how special this is. This is a big celebration. We have come a long way. It is obvious that you all have put in hard work. We are grateful, we appreciate it. And if you need anything, just continue to let us know how we can support you. Dr. H, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to ask, who are we?
We are Spring!
And we are?
Unspendable!
Thank you. I hate this, I just miss that. Thank you, everyone. It's always great to celebrate success. Our next item is agenda participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before they're considered by the board. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone signed up for agenda participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. Our next item is public participation. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone registered to speak under public participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. I'd like to record, to show that trustee Kelly P. Hodges joined us at 7:54. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Anne Westbrook.
Good evening, President Durant, members of the board, and Dr. Hinahosa. This evening, we have our annual audit report from our external auditors at Whitley Penn, as well as a presentation of our annual comprehensive financial report that we refer to as our ACFR. So to get us going this evening, I'd like to ask that Ms. Leanne Karandong from Whitley Penn, she's our audit part, or excuse me, audit manager, who's going to come up and give the board a presentation of the external audit report.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. Good evening, President Durant, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Hinahosa. I am here to present the results of the audit of both the financial statements and the single audit for the fiscal year 2022-2023. So to start off, allow me to introduce you, the team on our end, who has made this audit possible. So we have Kiefer Legnada, Associate, we have Bryce Richmond, our Senior Associate, myself, Leanne Karandong, our Audit Manager. We also have Mr. Tom Peterson, he is our Quality Control Reviewer. So he is a partner who is independent to the engagement team. So he's like a fresh set of eyes who reviewed our audit work and the reports prior to issuance. And last but not the least, we have Ms. Selena Saracere, our Engagement Partner. On this slide, I would just like to show you a brief overview of the audit process and the different stages they're in. So on stage one, we have the planning process. So this starts during the spring, so that was during March or April this year. On stage two, we identify the internal controls of the district. So the team comes out to the district around April or May. We talk to different department heads for the departments who are related to the financial statements and any federal major program directors as applicable. And we inquire about their different internal controls, we gain an understanding of them, and then perform our testing. And that is stage number three. Moving on to stage number four, this happens in August or September of 2023. This is our substantive testing. So this is after the finance team has a chance to close their books. So we come back out and test the year-end balances. And lastly, on stage five, here we are on the opinion and report issuance. For this slide, these are the different areas that we had tested for our internal controls. So firstly, we had our payroll testing. We take a sample of the paychecks that were dispersed during the year. We test them for accuracy and authorizations. And all the other disbursements, the non-payroll transactions, we also take a sample of those. The third bubble here is for procurement testing. So we review the purchasing procedures of the district and whether they're in line with local policies and whether they are in compliance with state and federal requirements as applicable. We also look into the information technology, the IT side. So we look at the user access into the financial system of the district and test to see a sample of employees, whether their user access rights are in line with proper segregation of duties. The next two here are two different revenue streams of the district. So we have property taxes, and we also have other revenues, specifically child nutrition services. So these two have a large volume of transactions, so we do test controls over these. And in addition to collections testing for property taxes, we also look into refunds and any adjustments that may have occurred during the year. And lastly, we look into the PIMS and ADA. So specifically here, we'll look into attendance change testing as this relates directly to state funding. So the purpose of our audit is to provide you all an opinion on whether the financial statements, whether the users of the financial statements can rely on this information and whether they can make informed decisions based on these information. So our audit was conducted in accordance with the generally accepted audit standards and the government auditing standards. Here in front of you are the three different possible outcomes of any audit. So starting from the left, this is the worst outcome that an oddity may receive. So the disclaimer, this just means that the financial records of the oddity were in such poor shape that we are unable to evaluate them and present an opinion. The second outcome possible is a qualification. So there may be a slight modification or departure from GAAP in an area or two within the financial statements. And lastly, we have what we call the unmodified opinion, also called a clean opinion. And that is what has been earned by the district this fiscal year. There were also no internal control findings related to financial reporting, and there were no findings related to compliance. During the year, we also have issued a management comment letter. I will talk about that later on as well on another slide. And we have also issued our opinion on the federal programs. So during the year, the district had expended $111 million total of federal fund expenditures for fiscal year 2023. And out of those, we have tested three major programs. First off is the ESSER program. So you may have noticed that this program had always been tested year after year since the pandemic began. This is because it was designated as a higher-risk program by the Office of the Management and Budget in the federal government. And it also comprises about $50 million of the expenditures of federal funding during the year. So it's a hefty program. We also tested special education cluster programs, as well as the 21st Century programs. So for all of these, we have issued an unmodified opinion over each major federal program. And there were no internal control findings related to each major program. As I have mentioned, we have issued a management letter this year. So these are just observations that we have encountered during our payroll control testing. So before I go over the three different items here, I just want to say that these are only observations, and they do not arise to a finding level, but we wanted to bring them to your attention. So for number one, during our general payroll test of 40 checks, we noted one of the paycheck did not have a supporting timesheet on file. But upon inquiry with management, this appeared to be an isolated case. Item number two, during our ESSER payroll tests, we noted three pay adjustments errors. And once we presented these to the client or to management, they are already aware of these, and they already have done the corrections. For number three, we noted one paycheck with an overpayment of about $650 that occurred around September 2022. And as a result, upon bringing it to the attention of management, they have contacted the employee to establish a repayment plan. As far as the management's response, in the summer of 2022, Spring ISD hired a total of 1,100 new employees. So there was an influx in employees. So these was, it was a large task for the HR and payroll departments, hence these have occurred. To rectify this, the district had hired six temporary employees, three in payroll, three in HR, for the rest of the fiscal year to help with the efforts. Moving on to the substantive procedures, so these are the procedures that we do after year-end, as I have mentioned. So we start with analytical procedures. We do this mainly for expenditures. So we look into flux and ratio analysis of both payroll and non-payroll costs. We look at historical trends and whether the current year-end balances make sense based on those trends. We also perform some predictive tests, specifically for property tax collections. We also do some vouching. These are inspection of documentary evidence of transactions. So these may involve collections made by the district or payments made by the district. We look into bank statements, invoices, purchase orders, et cetera. The fourth kind of testing that we do is confirmations. So we reach out to the different financial institutions that a district use. We confirm the balances related to cash, investment, and bonds. And lastly, we look into third-party reports. We have the TEA payment report, the State Comptroller's payment report, the TA payment ledgers, and summary of finances. So we use these reports to corroborate the information relating to intergovernmental revenue or receivable liability if applicable. So for the next two slides, these are just required communications. As y'all's auditor, we are required to present these to y'all, starting with the engagement letter. So we have conducted our audit consistently with the plan's scope and timing previously communicated to you. So this letter was dated earlier in the year, January 6, 2023. We also have the two audit risks. So these risks are applicable to all audited entities, and these are not specific to Spring ISD. So we have management override and improper revenue recognition. The third item, the district's accounting policies and methods are appropriate and are in accordance with industry standards. So during fiscal year 2023, the district implemented the new pronouncement, GASP number 96. So this relates to subscription-based IT arrangements, also known as SBITAS. And they have been presented in the financial statements as well. During the course of our audit, we have encountered no disagreements or difficulties. We have received a management representation letter signed by the finance team. So this just states all the information that we have requested have been provided to us. No information were withheld, and they have, all the information have been reported in the financial statements. As far as the consultations with other accountants, we are not aware of any situations where management had consulted to any other accountants. It's okay to do so, but as the district's auditors, we would like to note these information. We discussed the application of accounting principles and auditing standards prior to retention. However, our responses were not conditioned to our retention as the district's auditors. And lastly, the financial reports that you have today, they contain estimated values as well. So these are specifically for state aid, other post-employment benefits and pension liabilities, and allowance for doubtful accounts specifically for uncollectible property taxes. And that is all I have for you tonight. If y'all have any questions, feel free to ask, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mine is real quick, just the acronym GAAP, can you share what that stands for?
So GAAP is Generally Acceptable Accounting Principles.
Okay, thank you.
I had some questions on the observations. One, so this feels like the first time I've seen that, is that right? That can't be right, is it?
It is the first time that you've seen it in the audit report, because the audit just concluded. But it is definitely not the first time we've discussed the challenges that we had in payroll in September of 2022. And those were findings related to that payroll.
Okay.
Time period.
Okay, so then I have a couple of questions, but that answers one of them. You did a test and the sample size was 40 checks?
Yes, for number one. So we do have different sample depending on the population. So for number one, this relates to general payroll testing. So this is overall district-wide, we do a random sample of 40 checks. But we also do, for our major federal programs, we also do a sample specifically to those. So those also have their specific 40, like for number two, it's for ESSER payroll, we also have a separate 40 paycheck specifically to ESSER.
Okay, that's, I think, so for number three, it would have been sample size of 40?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Not hearing any other questions. I'd like to thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook.
Okay, so to go through and take a moment to look through our annual comprehensive financial report, you all have this very beautiful document here at your seats. And so I wanted to begin, if we could turn just to little, the little eye, which is the table of contents. Because it is a comprehensive document, but we're going to zero in on a certain financial statement. But I wanted to make sure that as you spend your time reviewing the document, that you know how to walk through the information. So the first section is the introductory section. And so that's where we're introducing the community or the reader of these financial statements to Spring ISD. Who are we, where are we located, what is the economic environment that Spring ISD is operating within? What's our tax base look like, that sort of information. There's also some very general information in their organizational charts and those sorts of things. The next section, which is really more the heart of the report, is the financial section. And so that's where you'll see the actual letter from the auditors that you heard Ms. Karandong speak on just a moment ago regarding their unmodified or clean opinion. Also in this section is the management's discussion and analysis. So that's more of the thought process, or it's not necessarily a thought process, but the details behind the numbers that you see and the why behind the changes and some of the numbers that happened from last year compared to this year, as well as all of the financial statements themselves. And the notes are included in that financial section. And so we'll look at a couple of those statements here this evening. And then the third section, which is actually beginning on the And then the third section, which is actually beginning on the two little I page, is the statistical section. So that's where you can see those financial trends. Typically, in most reports, you're going to see ten years worth of data. And so with our last few years being quite different than the decade before, you'll see some interesting trends as things tend to change a little bit, our average daily attendance, our enrollment, those sorts of things that we've talked about a lot here. You can also see what's happening with the assessed valuation with the properties within Springs District. So it's all the trend data over the last ten years. So with that, just to give you a little bit of acclamation to the reports that you're looking at, I wanted to turn us to the actual basic financial statements. And the first one is on page thirty-one of this bound document. And so we have two different types of financial statements within our annual comprehensive financial report. And that's the government-wide financial statements and then the governmental fund financial statements. We start with what's the first one, which is statement of net position. And the second one, which is statement of activities, and these are our government-wide financial statements. Which means that these are are completed on an accrual basis of accounting. Revenues are recorded when they're earned and expenses are recorded when the liability is incurred, regardless of the timing of when the cash flows actually take place. And a good example of that is bond funds. So we set up a liability because we have bonds payable, but those bonds may not be payable for up to twenty years in the future. So that's our government-wide financial statement, long-term debt full accrual, as I mentioned. And so the major things that are happening on this statement that's impacting any change this year is the fact that we did sell our first tranche of our bonds. And so you can see that when you look at our temporary investments that are close to five hundred million dollars. And then you see towards the bottom of the page and liabilities that our doing more than a year is now nine hundred and fifty-six million. And that's our our total debt has, of course, grown because we've issued that first tranche of our bonds. So the next page is on page thirty-two, statement of activities. So this is again another government-wide financial statement. And as I mentioned before, that full accrual, the timing and how we record things on this statement is different. It's based on what you heard Leon mention about GAAP and Gatsby and how we have to record our government-wide financial statements. But where I wanted to really spend our attention this evening is on page thirty-five. Because this is what if you're in the private sector, you would refer to as your profit and loss statement, your revenues and expenditures, so to speak. So if we turn to page thirty-five, this is our governmental fund financial statement. So here we're looking at things that are more current, their current financial resources. Their revenues are recognized when they're measurable and available. And expenditures, of course, are recorded when the liability is incurred, which is somewhat similar to what happens on government-wide. So with this financial statement, you really see how did we perform in fiscal year that ended June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. So similar to other reports that we see throughout the fiscal year, you start from the left-hand side. So you see our revenues at the top, our expenditures at the bottom. And if you go from left to right, you see the fund types and we talk through our fund types on other reports. So the first one is general fund. And of course, that is our general operating budget for the district. Typically, as I always tell people, when we say the budget, we're referring to the general fund budget. So in that budget, you can see our total revenues was three hundred and twenty-six point nine million. Our total expenditures, three hundred and thirty-five point six million. And so with our normal operations for the district, our expenditures did actually exceed our revenues by eight point six million dollars. And so if if you may recall, when we passed our budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, we passed a deficit budget of fifteen million dollars, which was inclusive of pretty significant raises in twenty-two, twenty-three for our staff. That's the year when we gave the five point three percent on average increase to our teachers. And we had other equity adjustments that were made throughout the year. But at the end, our our actual expenditures were only eight point six million above our revenues and not the fifteen million that we had budgeted. However, as we've spoken about throughout this entire year, the self-funded medical plan has not been operating very well. It has been running at a deficit the entire year. And you can see that we had to do a transfer out to cover the medical plan of eleven point five million dollars. And so that net impact to our fund balance from this this fiscal year's operations was that twenty million dollars total. So you can see the change in our fund balance from that one hundred and twelve point five million to ninety-two point four million. And to Ms. Durant's question that she asked, it is that represents twenty-seven point five percent of the district's total expenditures, which is down about nine percent compared to last year. So that is something that we've had lots of discussions about. We had an increase to our premiums this year. We're constantly continuously making adjustments to the plan to try and right-size the plan to make sure that it's affordable to our employees, but it's also operating financially sound. And that is continuing to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to to stop that from happening, to stop this loss of of revenue that's happening. Okay, the next fund, do you have a question?
Yeah, Justine, do you have a question? See your light on. So my, so I just want to be sure I'm reading in the right place. So the transfer is out, that's eleven and a half million dollars. That's because of the health insurance?
That's correct.
And so that is the right thing I'm looking at though?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, if no additional questions, then I'll move to the next fund, which is the debt service fund. And we know the debt service fund is the fund that pays our long-term debt. That's our bonds payable, the principal and interest associated with that long-term debt. So in our debt service fund, we had revenues of seventy-eight point one million, expenditures of sixty-six, just under sixty-six point one million. That's including the principal and interest payment on our debt and then our small issuance costs. And then, of course, we go to the bottom, we had some capitalized interest that was a part of our bond transaction that moved over into our debt service fund to pay for that interest that became that is becoming due prior to us increasing our tax rate. So that's in addition to the debt service fund. And overall, the net change in fund balance in debt service is twenty-five million for a total ending debt service fund balance of ninety-eight point two million. So recall that we make two debt service payments a year. One is in August on August fifteenth and the other is in February on February fifteenth. So our fiscal year end is June thirtieth. So we have that ninety-eight million dollars in fund balance on June thirtieth. But on August fifteenth, we made a payment of fifty-six million dollars for our debt service payment on August fifteenth. So that fund balance is there, but it goes down very quickly once we make that debt service payment. And as you know, our debt service payments going forward will be more because we're issuing more debt. The next major fund that's here is S R three. And so we've talked quite a bit about S R three, the amount of funds we have available each year and how those funds have been spent. So S R three is a federal fund that's on a reimbursement basis, which means that we only receive the revenue after we do drawdowns on the expenditures that have occurred. So the revenue and the expenditures on those types of funds will always equal one another. So there's no fund balance. The next column is the capital projects fund. So this is where our bond proceeds that we take in to pay for the spring high schools and the epic and all of those, it's all handled here within this capital projects fund. So of course, the there's very little revenue we have received and that's primarily interest revenue that was brought in. And then we had some federal programs associated with us getting reimbursed with the E-rate program. And then, of course, the expenditures are fifteen point eight million. And that is some of the runout expenditures on the twenty sixteen bond program. And under other financing sources is where you see the transaction where we sold that first tranche of bonds. So you see the issuance of capital-related bonds, you see the premium on those bonds. And then you see that capitalized interest that I talked about on the debt service fund. It was in this transaction, but then was transferred to debt service to offset those payments that we have. So the ending fund balance with the capital projects fund was three hundred and five point three million. And we know that those dollars will continue to go down as our capital projects rev up. The last column here is the non-major other governmental funds. And so that includes lots of different funds such as child nutrition, Title One, S R two. Those are I D A B, which is our special ed federal fund. All of those are included together as non-major other governmental funds. And you can see in total, our revenue there was ninety-one million, total expenditures eighty-five million. So we had an increase to our fund balance of six point six million with a final ending resulting fund balance of seventeen point two million, which is largely made up of the child nutrition fund. That's the fund balance that you have there. So that is the primary operating revenues and expenditures by fund type that occurred for the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three fiscal year. And so I want to pause and give you time to ask questions.
So this document lists expenditures by fund type. It's so, because I guess in my my simple way of thinking about how we spend money, I I have a big bucket that I call payroll. And so payroll consists of several of these fund types, right?
So payroll would be in the expenditures and they're listed. Payroll will be listed based on the functional area. So for example, in general fund, in instruction is where teacher payroll would be included. So it is through all of those expenditure columns.
That makes sense to me. Is there a a document that listed in my as the way I simply think of it? Is a big bucket?
Check and see.
Because like, actually, what I really want to get to is like, where would I normally see what we spend for health insurance for comparison's sake? Because I intend to go back and look back a couple of years and see what we were paying for insurance when it was T R S.
Right. So when it was T R S, we were just paying the employer contribution. And so now, since we're self-funded, we take the employer contribution and the employee contribution. And that's the funds that we have available to pay all the claims and the administrative cost. And that's fallen short because the claims and administrative costs are more than the premiums that were that were taken in and the employer portion. And so that's where we're falling short. So this fiscal year is actually the first fiscal year that we were a full year or fully self-funded. The previous fiscal year, we were partially self-funded and partially T R S.
Right, I do remember that.
And so you wouldn't necessarily be able to pull out the T R S portion on previous reports because it was like payroll, it was mixed in with the expenditures.
And and there isn't. And so so there's types and functions. Do I have the terminology right?
Functions.
And so is there any category where we reference payroll? Is there such a category?
Just payroll. I was looking for a particular. First, while I'm looking for that particular schedule and I can draw your attention.
You don't need to find it tonight because I mean, I I just, I'm curious because so some of us have been doing this this edunomics training, right? Where we're supposed to learn how to be more effective budgeters. And it seems to me that anytime the people at Georgetown talk about this, they use this catch-all term for payroll. Am I, is that right? And I don't ever actually see payroll in our audit documents from Whitley Penn. Or at least I don't recall.
Right, because this is a governmental accounting standards board presented report. And so it's not presented in that manner. Where you see payroll is in the monthly financial report when we show the categories by function. And then at the bottom of the monthly financial report, which was in this month, this month's board packet, the bottom shows payroll, supplies and material and other operating costs. So that's where you see payroll and you can see that delta on page three of that report year over year. I did want to take you to page thirty-nine, which is the internal service fund. And that's where you can see the just segregated operations of the health plan.
Thank you.
And what I was looking for was exhibit C. I kept saying, where's my C? That's on page eighty-two, which is budget versus actual, which I know trustee Correa likes to see. That's on page eighty-two, but it's not broken down by payroll, et cetera, because that's.
Monthly financial will have that.
Yes, yes, it does.
And so if if I wanted to do like some armchair accounting, I could take that monthly budget report, start in September and count to the next September and that would be our fiscal year?
June, we're June thirtieth fiscal year. And you don't typically receive a June report because this is your June report. It's the big one. But you can go month, year over year, month by month. And that's actually on the variance analysis report, which is page three.
Means I don't have to do it. Thank you.
No, we don't want you to have to do the calculations. No, okay.
Isn't it possible to maybe take a look at the training that you guys are doing for edunomics? And compare that to how we see it in our statements? And maybe spend a few minutes on that at our committee of the whole meeting on January eleventh?
We can do that. I think part of the issue is the the edunomics materials are nationwide. And so they're they're accounting for a lot of different ways that different states account for things. And so.
I was thinking, would it be helpful if we look at this category that they have, say it's category A, B, C? And Ms. Westbrook's could maybe say, for that A, you'll find it here for us. For that B, you'll find it here for us. Sort of a side-by-side comparison. Am I asking too much?
We're more than happy to provide financial information however you like to see it. This report, however, is required to be presented in the manner it's presented.
But you're trying to think through it from the training that we're having and the fiscal cliff we're coming on and how we, you know, kind of tie it all together. Thinking that may be helpful.
I sometimes feel like I understand what's happening. And then I'll get a new piece of information that throws that all into doubt. And so it's just me working through my processing.
And maybe I'd like to recommend, because this is last year's budget review, right? The auditor presented it, and I know it's the first time you're looking at it, but it's last year's report. We are meeting in January for the special session and we want to be able to start looking at very specific recommendations. I would like the board to consider maybe a December special workshop to do work through, like actually work through and do what you're talking about, Ms. Durant. Like do what you have been learning through edunomics, how do we do it? And just spend doing the nuts and bolts.
Nuts and bolts.
The nuts, nuts and bolts, but for the whole group to come together and just do a budget workshop. Not thinking necessarily of where we need to be in January, but just really understanding the budget. And so, you know, how we got here, I know this, you know, Ms. Westbrook's has gone through. While, you know, we didn't hit the deficit that we had budgeted for, which was really good. We had budgeted for a fifteen million dollar deficit. We actually had some savings last year, but we still, you know, had to hit fund balance. And so like, understanding those parts and we could do a special session just on that in December. So when we come in January, now looking at the recommendations, we've gotten all of that in our heads. Because I'm doing the same thing you're doing, Mr. Adams. It's like putting them in the right places. And if we can solidify that in December in a special session, Ms. Westbrook's, like the nuts and bolts and the comparison. And then by January, we'll be ready for, you know, the heavy lifting that we know we have to do. And we can talk about a date, something that we could all come together.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful for for all of us. More work for Ms. Westbrooks. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, I, did you have any more questions, Ms. Brown? Looks like we're good to go.
I just wanted to, I'm sorry, while I still had the microphone, to introduce our director of accounting who is here tonight, Ms. Lila Murray. Which is staying, Lila. Say hello. Lila's team, the Department of Accounting, they're the ones that are uh on the front lines throughout the audit. They are the point people for the audit and work directly with Leon and her team in preparing the annual comprehensive financial report. I always say it's my baby. She knows that. But she's the one that's on the front line getting it done throughout the season. So thank you.
Thank you for being here and thank you for all your hard work. If there aren't any other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Um, President Durant, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three and the independent auditors' report. Second.
It's been moved by trustee McDaniel and seconded by trustee Newhouse that the Board of Trustees approve the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three and the independent auditors' report. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our chief of human resources services, Dr. Terrell King.
Uh, good evening, President Durant, uh trustees, Dr. Hannah Hosa, senior leadership staff and guests. Uh, the first agenda item I have tonight uh is um I'm excited to bring this recommendation to modify auxiliary pay grade one to provide a pay increase to our majority of uh employees who make up this figure to our custodians uh as discussed uh in the work session uh Thursday night. And you can find this on page two hundred and nine of your agenda packet.
Two oh nine.
And so just as a reminder, this is a uh seven percent increase to both the pay range and the existing salaries of our uh employees. So would bring starting custodian salaries from twelve dollars an hour to twelve dollars and eighty-four cents an hour and would bring the average hourly rate of our employees from twelve seventy-two an hour to thirteen seventy-three an hour.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the increase to the hourly salary of auxiliary pay grade one to align with market survey data as presented by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee Newhouse that the Board of Trustees approve the increase to the hourly salary of auxiliary pay grade one to align with the market survey data as presented by the administration. Is there any discussion?
As I recall during our conversation last Thursday, um, there was um a dollar amount figure that was like the net hit to our bottom line. I want to say it was two hundred and seventy-six.
Yeah, it's in your agenda packet, you'll, oh, it's cut off. Page, well, page two hundred and fourteen in your agenda packet, maybe on yours, it shows that approximate cost of mine, uh, it's cut off.
Well, anyhow.
You are correct, uh trustee Adams. It's two hundred and seventy-two thousand six hundred and sixty-five.
Just, I I only bring that up because I want to reemphasize the value of breaking that figure down per student. And I want to encourage us to like if even even if we're not thinking in those terms, um, for our community, talk in those terms. Like there is, I think I calculated really quickly like an eight dollar per student cost for this. But as we're having our struggles with the legislature around budget and funding, um, I I need some mechanism to to hold them accountable for their lack of action on our basic allotment and other issues of funding.
Will do. Thank you.
And I I'd just like to comment, I want to thank everyone. Um, we had a very hearty discussion on Thursday at the work session. Um, we've done a study and determined that we are well below our surrounding districts in the specific pay grade for our custodians and we've had a difficult time keeping staffed. I think we're running at like twenty-six.
Twenty percent vacancy.
Twenty percent vacancy. Vacancy rate right now. Um, and our custodians are a very critical uh piece. Uh, it even impacts safety and everything to make sure that we're fully staffed in that area. Uh, and so I know uh just from, I just want to say this for the community that we recognize we are looking at um challenges with the budget right now. Uh, and we're having to make cuts, but we also have to make decisions that's in the best interest of staffing students as well. And when we're finding that we can't staff a critical role like this, uh, we need to take uh action. So I want to thank um our H R department and for bringing it to the board, to our attention and so that we can make sure that we're making the best decisions for all.
Thank you, President Durant. And just a reminder, uh, as we discussed Thursday, this is a two-pronged approach. This is not the 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 final action that we will recommend uh when we come back for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget cycle. Ms. Westbrooks and I have already had this conversation about looking for enough cuts uh so that we can not only give a pay increase, but we can also give market adjustments to to our pay grades, especially our auxiliary pay grade.
And we also talked about other opportunities for incentives because we can incentivize folks. We don't always need, doesn't always need to be monetary, right? So we're looking at other ways. Um, we will take further action during the budget process, but we have an urgent need right now.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Any other comments from anyone? With that, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. You can let our custodians.
Yes.
Please don't leave.
Mrs. Stewart.
More to come, right?
Yes, more to come. Our our next item, thank you again, trustees. Our next item is another exciting news. Uh, this is a uh um a recommendation to receive grant funds from the Houston Endowment in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars uh for our spring ISD human resources uh talent, uh support talent strategic planning. And so uh as discussed on Thursday night, our goal is to become for our H R department uh to move from being a transactional department to a more strategic partner. I actually had a great conversation this afternoon with our consultant from the Urban Schools, Human Capital Academy, who will be our partner in this work uh in kind of mapping out uh the next uh two to three years of work. And it's an ambitious schedule because as we were looking at things, it's like, okay, TK, you you really want these in the first three or six months? Like, we have to get started. And so uh we are excited to uh begin on this work, which will allow us to re- restructure ourselves, train the human resources business partners to strategically support principals, staffing and talent efforts, uh, provide functions for new supports uh to uh H R such as leadership development and substitute staffing. And so I, and that was what I shared with our urban schools consultant. Uh, that would be the priority work that I would like to get consulting services on in the, starting in December, uh, to be able to help support us for our January twenty-ninth launch of our managing our own substitute program. Uh, redesigning our key selection and hiring processes, developing uh key performance indicators for all teams in H R, um, strategic planning uh for H R and support principals and becoming human capital managers. And so uh that's our um, that that's our goal. And we can't wait to come back to report our progress over the next two years about uh the e- exciting uh changes and benefits uh as a result of this grant.
Thank you, Dr. King. I will now entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees authorize the superintendent to receive the grant funds from the Houston Endowment for Spring ISD Talent Strategic Planning.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by trustee Newhouse and seconded by trustee Jensen that the Board of Trustees authorize the superintendent to receive the grant funds from the Houston Endowment for Spring ISD Talent Strategic Planning. Is there any discussion? I'd like to commend the district for um seeking out these grant opportunities, uh, making a very successful application uh in receiving this fund and excited about partnering with um the Houston Endowment. This is a a half a million dollar grant, so it's um a great start uh to revamping and um moving us forward in our strategic plan around human capital.
Thinking, I also want to thank our superintendent, Dr. Hannah Hosa, for her vision. It was, I believe, on my second day. When she told me TK, we have about four weeks to get a grant written. And so, but she outlined her vision and there's also her alignment work was another big reason why we received the support from Houston Endowment. I just want to say, you know, we have another grant coming up from Houston Endowment. But there are four work streams that Houston Endowment is funding in Spring ISD. The two grants you're seeing here tonight, one is a grant that's going to an outside partner, the National Center for Grow Your Own. But it's, they're going to be helping work with us using some other Houston Endowment grant funds to to strengthen our teacher pipeline, our teacher assistant to teacher program. And so um and another uh project uh working with with teacher pipeline. So they are a strong partner in helping Spring ISD become the best that we can be as in as far as ensuring strategic staffing in the district. And so.
But we want to give a strong thank you to Houston Endowment for their support of Spring ISD. There aren't any other questions, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. You can continue.
And uh my final agenda item tonight, uh, President Durant, is another grant from the Houston Endowment supporting our opportunity culture program. This will provide three years of funding for an opportunity culture specialist to assist Ms. Natasha Tillman, who was here on Thursday night as our director of opportunity culture. She, for the last two years, she has been supporting uh the campuses and teachers in that pro- program by herself. Uh, this this funding from Houston Endowment uh over three years will fund uh not a specialist to help her deliver the professional development and the monitoring uh for the opportunity culture program. And so this grant is for a total of three hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Dr. King. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees authorize the superintendent to receive the grant funds from the Houston Endowment for Spring ISD Opportunity Culture Models.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Adams and seconded by trustee Correa that the Board of Trustees authorize the superintendent to receive the grant funds from the Houston Endowment for the Spring ISD Opportunity Culture Model. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, trustees. Great, great work ahead.
Absolutely. And I actually want to thank um Dr. Hannah Hosa and her leadership team for seeking other opportunities to fund um our great strategies. So great work. Um, so our next item is an update from each of the four uh board ad hoc committees. And so first up is our audit committee and our trustee Newhouse will provide an update.
Thank you, Madam President. The Audit Committee had an opportunity to meet this month with Ms. Rios and the committee, Dr. Hannah Hoser. The internal audit had an opportunity to look at forty-four projects that Mrs. Rios has completed. And I'm happy to say that they were all in good standings with the district. Uh, she will give us a list of those projects at our next meeting in which will December, end be in December where the internal audit it audit will present the mid-year progress report and these will be listed there. They, she will also present a revised calendar uh at our next board session on December fifth. And this we receive every year at this time. So we are asking that we review that and place that in the consent agenda items. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Newhouse. Any questions for the Audit Committee? All right, our next committee is our Governance Committee and I'll turn it over to uh trustee Jensen.
We do not have a report because it turns out that our October meeting was uh the sixteenth, Monday, the sixteenth, and we had a board meeting the seventeenth. So that's when you got your October report on our meeting. Our November meeting will be on the twenty-seventh. Uh, we pre-selected dates at the beginning of the school year so that um we could get that on our calendar. Yeah, so we'll talk to you in December.
Thank you, Dr. Jensen. And we know you all have been working hard, so we look forward to your uh report next month. Um, our next board, our next committee is the Board Equity Committee and I'll turn it over to um Winford Adams, Jr.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so after two months of not being able to meet for various scheduling re- uh reasons, we did uh meet November sixth, finally. Um, all of the members were present. And we looked at a couple of things. Um, we are, um, there's some policies, equity-based policies that we think ought to be reviewed by governance. So we're going to ask the the body whether we could uh take a look at F O B local and A E H. Do I have that right? A E H local, um, to see if there might possibly be something we can do with those, just do the deeper dive?
Just F O B.
Just F O B, not A E H.
That's different.
Right. Um, and then um we are also at our next meeting, which will be December sixth, gonna get a report from um Ivory Pearl, Pearl Ivory, excuse me.
Miss Pearl Ivory, and she's actually here today. Uh, if you'll wave, Ms. Ivory.
There you are, okay. Uh, she is continuing the work that Dr. Marie Mendoza was doing for us. Uh, so we're gonna uh get a report uh on phase two of that work with our teacher professional development around cultural awareness. Um, so participation data, qualitative participant feedback. Um, and then we're going to get a presentation of phase three. So the latest addition to what we hope will be that series of professional development around cultural awareness um for our our staff. I'm curious to see uh if we can figure out what quantitative outcome data looks like from that work. Just put that in your ear, uh, Ms. Ivory. Um, and then um we asked uh Dr. Hannah Hosa if she could look into the cost in this time of budget concerns, the cost of a follow-up audit um with Cambridge or some other provider to see how much we've grown in the last three years since our initial report came out. Um, and we recognize that there were probably some budgetary constraints, but we wanted to get sort of a ballpark figure on what that might look like if we were able to do the follow-up audit. Um, and then the the last bit of work, we we did start doing um a sort of a line-by-line review of what Cambridge called our limiting factors around equity in our high-leverage recommendations. And so we're working our way through those, seeing if we can check off things where we have met the mark on that particular issue or if we need to do more work around those as we go. And that's it for equity.
Thank you. Um, I I did have a couple of follow-up questions. I I would like for um Ms. Pearl Ivory's um second and third phase um to actually be shared with the whole body. Um, and I'm glad to see you're doing the line-by-line because I really like to, they had it spelled out pretty clearly based on their audit what um data showed actionable opportunities. And to be able to see what we've done and if we've gotten any progress uh would be great to just kind of see where we still have opportunities. uh, would be great to just kind of see, uh, where we still have opportunities to engage, um, that we haven't missed anything that we could potentially embark upon, uh, before we do another audit.
Okay.
So in that line-by-line, they gave us a list of actionable opportunities. How many of them have we actually explored? Are there still any, um, that we could explore? Uh, and then once we've done that, gotten that running up, I think then it would be good to, to come back and follow up with another audit to see if they identify any impacts and growth. Does anyone agree with that? Anyone agree with that? Um, you mentioned, um, a policy, um, that you want to go over to, um, to governance. Can you give us just a little bit of insight around which policy it is and your recommendation?
I don't have FOB near my front of me. Do you have it with you?
FOB local is discipline. So we know we did some work around the Student Code of Conduct, so just coming back around to that one to see if there's anything, um, that we can do to make that policy more equitable and, and alignment.
So that's FOB, um, loco, which is around discipline. Um, is there any concern from the body with us moving forward in the, uh, with the Equity Committee sending that over to governance? Hearing none? You can go ahead and send that over. Just trying to make sure we are still operating as a body and not in silos. Uh, so, not hearing any concerns. Uh, I would say go ahead and move forward, and great job. Thank you. Our final Audit Committee, Board Committee, is our Community Engagement, and I will turn it over to Trustee Kelly P. Hodges.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the Community Engagement Committee, we have been doing some great work. Unfortunately, we did not meet this month, but, uh, or the month of October. But as you know, the Community Engagement Committee, um, we're charged with partnering with the district and key stakeholders to develop and implement opportunities to improve communications and awareness between the district parents and the community. And we activate using community surveys, public forums, workshops, and special events. So, uh, even though we didn't meet, um, in October, we have been quite busy in partnership with the Family and Community Engagement Department. The C E C supported the Veterans Day Breakfast that we had on Friday, which was, um, very well-attended. It was held on November the tenth at the Randall Reed Center. And, uh, one of the highlights of that event was the keynote speaker, who, uh, was, who is retired Lieutenant Colonel Melanie Dugard-Foy, who is a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, which is another one of our community partners. And, uh, Lu- um, retired Lieutenant Colonel, uh, Foy gave a really empowering presentation, and she talked about, uh, her work, um, when she was in the military, but also the things that she's doing now to serve, uh, veterans, uh, now that she is retired. So this event, uh, has been well-received by the community and staff, and, um, Spring ISD recognizes, you know, the veterans each year. And I really want to commend, uh, Trinita Carroll, the Executive Director of the Family and Community Engagement Department, and her staff for coordinating and executing a great event. Um, as an event planner by trade, it's not easy to coordinate, uh, events and make sure everyone is, you know, where they're supposed to be and, and things happen, but, and they did a great job executing that event, and I've attended the last, uh, two years. So, um, is Trinita here? Okay, thank you. Um, so it was very well, uh, attended, and it, it just really, uh, to watch it grow, I'm, uh, very excited about it, and I know that it will continue to grow. Um, and so we encourage the community, any of the, any veterans that are living, uh, in Spring ISD, it's not just for parents, it's our veterans that are in the community. We want to say thank you, uh, for your service. So please, uh, look for the information for twenty twenty-four. Also, this week, Thursday, we are hosting our second Building Bridges with the Board. I believe the time is six PM. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's six PM on Thursday at the Community Engagement Center. And as you recall, Building Bridges with the Board is a series of community outreach meetings that's facilitated by the Board of Trustees. And we launched it to increase community engagement with us. And we encourage the community to come out and join us and bring a neighbor or a family member or friend. If you live in the Spring community, we really want to hear from you. And also, Table Talks returns on December fourth. We plan to engage with the staff members, um, on December the fourth. And if you recall, that, uh, Table Talks were, was launched to increase engagement and encourage dialogue between, uh, us, the Board of Trustees, and campus and district staff members. So we're very excited about that continuing, and we're also looking forward to compiling data and, um, looking at where we started, where we are now, and how we'll continue to move forward as a, as a committee as we continue to work with, uh, the community and the district. Madam President, that concludes the Community Engagement Committee report.
Thank you, Trustee Hodges. Any questions or additional comments for any of the committees? We're doing great work. I'm really proud and honored to serve with the colleagues on this board. So, thank you. Our next item is the Consent Agenda. I will now entertain a motion to approve and adopt all the items listed on tonight's Consent Agenda.
Um, Trustee Durant, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all the items listed on the Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee McDaniel and seconded by Trustee Adams, uh, that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all the items listed on the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. The Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, five-five-one dot zero-seven-four, and five-five-one dot zero-two-one. The voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the Board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed meeting will take place after the Board reconvenes in the open session. And the time is now eight fifty-eight PM. The Board of Trustees will now resume the open session of the, um, November fourteenth, Spring ISD regular board meeting. The time is now ten fifteen PM. Are there any items to address from the closed session? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee McDaniel that we adjourn tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Tonight's meeting adjourns at ten sixteen PM.